Hello, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right.
Do you know if Michael is going to be here today?
Michael emailed to say that he may not be there, so.
Okay.
He's traveling today.
Why don't we, and I know Lynette is not going to be here, so why don't we go ahead and get started? This is the June 16th meeting of the Carmel Climate Committee. Everybody's here except Michael and Lynette. First item on the agenda is public appearances. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern not on the agenda during public appearances. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak to us?
Councilmember Baron?
Yes.
May I? May I speak, please?
You may.
This is Michael McWalters, Scenic Road, two north of 11th.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, Councilmember Baron, how are you?
Good.
Good. I just wanted to... Back to an issue that I've been speaking about, I had four opportunities last week. It has to do with cell tower radiation. And the governor, Governor Newsom, signed AB 537, preventing cell towers from being installed next to firehouses because the firemen were getting sick. And Pittsfield, Massachusetts residents' health department issued a cease and desist order against Verizon because the people in one of their neighborhoods were getting sick. And the reason I'm calling in today is to ask you for your help because I wanted to ask you if in compiling the climate change report, you came across any scientific articles which show that cell tower radiation, electromagnetic frequency radiation kills slash damages trees, plants, honeybees, things like that. I've come across some articles that kind of run short of being scientific. There was an article in a publication called Maryland Matters. It was a political article. And they said that an independent body tasked with issuing advice to the French government on policies to reduce greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas emissions, which found that, quote, "The carbon impact of 5G deployment could amount to between 2.7 and 6.7 million tons of CO2 equivalent in 2030." That's a significant increase compared to the technology sector's environmental impact. And then another report called the Shift Project Report documented the rapidly increasing carbon footprint of communications technologies, including the energy for the production and use of equipment. Most importantly for me is I've seen some pictures of trees that are half-dead, and of course, the part that's dead is next to a cell tower. But in your great work in compiling this climate change report, if you came across articles that show cell tower radiation kills the urban forest, I would like you to send them to me, please. I'll send you an email with my contact information. And because we can't reject the cell tower based on cell tower radiation, but we can make our ordinance as restrictive as we can so that we limit the cell tower radiation in our community. And that's it. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Baron. Thank you, Councilmember Theus.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Did someone see Maureen and Laura? Public comment? If not, we'll proceed on.
No comment. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Why don't we proceed to the first item on the agenda, discuss feedback received from the Planning Commission, Forest and Beach Commission, City Council, and through other outreach meetings and correspondence on the pre-final Climate Adaptation Plan and Climate Action Plan. And I guess my understanding is, Evan, that you are going to conduct this discussion.
Yes, sir. All right, so the pre-final versions of the Climate Adaptation Plan and the Climate Action Plans were presented to the Planning Commission on May 11th and the Forest and Beach Commission on May 12th, and then the City Council on June 7th. The Climate Committee also hosted two development workshop meetings on April 26th and April 28th to review and discuss the draft plans. In addition, a follow-up community meeting was held on May 24th as another opportunity for the community to provide input on the plans. Staff also received communication from the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District stating their interest in being a partner and the project, as well as a letter from the Carmel Area Wastewater District providing comments on the draft plans. So with the applicable comments and input received from the commission meetings, public workshops, and outreach, we have incorporated some of the draft comments into the draft reports, as well of additional preliminary comments for further discussion. Anya, or Sebastian, can you please allow for screen sharing?
And Evan, my understanding from reading the report is that the Forest and Beach Commission and the Planning Commission comments have been incorporated into the report, but the City Council comments and the comments from CAUD and the Water Management District have not. That's correct.
Correct, and that was just a function of timing of the meetings. Yeah.
So, hi, are you able?
Yeah, I just got permission. I'm just looking for the right window now. Thank you. Okay, so is my screen showing okay? All right, I think I see heads nodding. So at the, the May 11th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission was very supportive of the plans. I think what I'll do here is I'll just run through all the feedback, and then as there's comment at the end, we can go back instead of going line by line and accommodate on each one. I don't think each item's gonna require its own discussion. So the Planning Commission was supportive of electrification, also supported the reduced use of automobiles. They have recommended the use of a shuttle service on special events, and then support further outreach on food waste consumption, including solutions for common implementation issues. Support for increasing forest health and wildfire mitigation, including in Pescadero Canyon, supporting the use of green roofs as cool roofs, and then support the prioritized implementation to support for prioritized implementation to ensure success. So all of those items have been included in the feedback section and the Climate Adaptation Plan, as well as some updates to the the actual actions. And then the one suggested action that has not been incorporated into the plan would be to update action 6.2.1, which would be to include, add green roofs into the Climate Action measure. Currently, it only speaks to cool roofs, so this would be to specifically add green roofs as one of those items. Similarly, the Forest and Beach Commission was very supportive of the draft plans. Their comments were they were supportive of hiring the grant writer slash climate coordinator position. They supported prioritizing implementation to ensure success, just like the Planning Commission recommending adding Pescadero Canyon to the list of natural resources and suggested to expedite bluff monitoring. So again, all those comments have been added to the Climate Adaptation Plan, and the adaptation measures updated accordingly to reflect reference to Pescadero Canyon. And then included the engineering evaluation of the bluff, which is part of the 2022-2023 CIP. At the construction outreach meeting, there was no additional feedback provided on the plans, however, as a follow-up meeting or as a follow-up correspondence to that meeting, we did receive an email correspondence from David Knight of Monterey Energy Group. That correspondent stated that going all-electric in Carmel is not without its challenges. Locating a heat pump compressor on small lots will be difficult. At least one compressor for HVAC and likely one for domestic water heating will be required. Also, that because of tree shading, we'll have limited solar access, and given PG&E's electric rates and without adequate solar, will likely lead to operating two to three times at a two to three times higher cost for space heating and domestic water heating. And it's, or what was suggested was as opposed to mandating all-electric homes, the city might want to look at a reach code that encourages greater comfort, indoor air quality, better acoustics, energy efficiency, and sustainable construction. The new Active House program will ensure all of those features while maintaining architectural freedom. So this is one of the suggested actions for discussion today. Consider adding a active house to the list of outreach materials in the Climate Action Plan Measure 1.1, Action 1.1.1. And to evaluate issues associated with the tree shading and heat pump compressors, excuse me, on small lots. And then we also had the community outreach meeting at Hofstra's house, however, we did not receive any additional feedback. The Monterey Peninsula Water Management District did provide a letter stating their interest to be a partner. So our suggested action is just to add them to the list of partners in the Climate Adaptation Plan. The Carmel Area Wastewater District also provided a letter stating their support for the project, however, they felt that there needed to be additional focus on sewers. So we do have the suggested action of maintaining CAUD as a list of partners as described, and amend the description in Action 3.1.9 to include associated infrastructure such as sewer lines in addition to the primary CAUD facility that's currently described in that action. So at the City Council meeting, staff did ask the council a number of questions. The first question being, "The Climate Committee was assembled to develop the Climate Adaptation and Action Plans. As the plan's near completion, the Climate Committee members have discussed the possibility of continuing meeting on a reduced schedule to oversee the implementation of certain projects, in particular, the coastal engineering study, which will guide coastal infrastructure maintenance and improvement projects in the face of sea level rise. Should the Climate Committee be tasked with this oversight?" So the council was supportive of the Climate Committee continuing oversight of the coastal engineering study. So the suggested action is revising the Climate Adaptation Plan to state the Climate Committee will be tasked with oversight of the coastal engineering study. Question number two for the council was, "The Climate Adaptation Plan recommends establishment of a sustainability commission to oversee the plan's implementation. Does the council support the establishment of a sustainability commission? If not, which elected or appointed body or bodies should be tasked with reviewing and providing feedback on implementation and monitoring?" The council stated that if a design review board is reestablished, the Planning Commission may be the best body to support implementation of the plans as the commission would no longer be responsible for designer view responsibilities. However, if a designer review board is not reestablished, the Forest and Beach Commission may be the best body because of the natural resources affected by climate change. The council was hesitant to appoint a new sustainability commission at the time due to commissioner volunteer availability, staffing resources, and costs. However, the council did note that all city departments should be involved in implementation of the plans, and each department director should be involved in the implementation. The plan also recommends, currently already recommends, a grant writer and a climate coordinator as a key position to ensure that the city is making progress on the adaptation actions. So our suggested action is add the above information to the council feedback section of the Climate Adaptation Plan, and also to retain the recommendation of a grant writer and climate coordinator for consideration for a future year budget, but also assess staffing capacity to perform this work once public work staffing returns to pre-pandemic levels. Question number three was, "Staff has already started to implement these plans by incorporating certain projects in the capital improvement plan and by taking into account climate action and climate adaptation into cities' projects such as wildfire mitigation and mission trail nature preserve, the force management plan update, and the design guideline update. Some of these projects identified in the Climate Adaptation and Climate Action Plans will require significant funding. What additional funding sources or sources should be prioritized to implement these projects?" The council did not identify specific or additional funding sources in detail, though the possibility of grants or assessment districts were briefly discussed. A council member did state that because climate change is happening, implementing the strategies in the plans must be achieved, and that there needs to be a commitment to funds as specific projects and measures are already, are ready to be implemented, and that future capital improvement projects are to be included in the five-year CIP. So this suggested action here is to add the above to the City Council Feedback Outreach Section. And then the last question was, "The development of these plans was on the list of council's strategic priorities. As this task is completed and removed from the strategic priorities, should any actions be added to the list to ensure continued emphasis on long-term implementation?" And council stated that the plan should be used as a roadmap and strategies should be pursued and revisited with the possibility of periodic updates provided to council. And that the importance of ongoing implementation was continually emphasized by the council. And the city administrator suggested that once the plans are adopted, that they can be removed from council strategic priorities as they are completed, and that, and then another initiative could be added to repopulate that list. And then the suggested action is to add that that comment to the council outreach section. And then we received a few more miscellaneous comments from the council, such as holding community workshops to generate excitement about serving on a future commission and gaining support for the various adaptation strategies and initiatives. So the suggested action is to add the city council's comment to the outreach section, and then revise Action 1.2.3 to include community workshops as an outreach effort. The council also specifically stated support for actions 1.3.3 through 1.3.5, which speaks to building electrification. And the suggested action there is to include that as a comment in the outreach section. Another comment was, "Recommend the implementation of a public solar project to show leadership in building electrification." So the suggested action there is to add that recommendation, and then to add an action item under Policy 3.1, similar to Action Item 3.1.2, to consider a green infrastructure project to be incorporated into the future CIP. And then lastly, there was a public comment. A member of the public expressed concerns regarding potential impacts of the built-in natural environment associated with the increase of wireless and cellular infrastructure. So the suggested action there is to add public comment on the, in the outreach section for the City Council meeting. So that concludes the comments that were received at all of the meetings. In respect to the comments, most of them are fairly easy to incorporate into the plans by staff. I don't know, Anya, am I missing anything?
No, so maybe we can just go back to, yeah, that some of the suggested actions, the first suggested actions in bold, and then see if anybody has any comments, revisions, edits. Any of those pages?
I think that's a good idea, Evan. It doesn't look like it'll take very long. So maybe, well.
Looks like Scott had a comment.
I do, yes.
Well, why don't we go down the list, so we get all the comments? We get all the sort of similar comments at the same time, if that's all right. We could do it page by page. You know, it would be one way, or we could do, we could do, or Evan, we could do just down to each bolded comment, since some of the pages have a number of bolded comments on them.
Yeah, let's just start at the top and work our way down. So the first one here suggested action, add green roofs into the Climate Action Measure 6.2, Action 6.2.1. So that's right here. That would just be including adding a sentence or two about using green roofs as a cool roof option.
If possible, would it be, would it be possible to add with low or no water plants?
Well, I would say that we specify that, or we specify that in other places in the report, so I assume it would follow through. As someone actually that has a green roof, it is, we find it extraordinarily difficult. We have tried low-water plants on that, and it is extraordinarily difficult because there's very limited space for root structure in these plants. So there's going to be a little bit of a trade-off with these things, but my comment on this and a couple of other things was, you know, there's this sort of design traditions workshop going on, Evan, and I think that some of these comments, and the ones I wrote down with respect to green roofs and the HVAC systems, those comments should be probably transmitted to that workshop so that they can be included in the work that they do. I'm happy to do that, Evan. However, we wanted to do that. You know, I know, yeah. Maureen, are you okay with leaving it the way it is?
Absolutely. The water-energy nexus is definitely a tough one.
Should we go on to the next page?
Yeah, so Jeff, to your point, I'm more than willing to bring that up in the the workshops, and as we go through the, the design guideline update, but any outreach you want to do as well is also very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one was suggest adding Active House to the list of outreach materials in the Climate Action Plan Measure 1.1.1. Feasibility analysis, Climate Action Plan Measure 1.2.1. Should evaluate issues associated with trees, tree shading, and heat pump compressors on small lots. So 1.1.1.
Evan, I have a comment on this. So I, to Jeff's earlier point, I already sent a list of comments to Brandon about the design guideline update, and I included this issue as one of those comments. I already sent that off to him. It seems to be maybe an appropriate way to address how to deal with these heat pumps and mitigating visual and acoustic issues that's involved with that.
Yeah, I think that that's, thank you, John. I think that that's an issue we already see, you know, Evan, with air conditioners. You know, that issue pops up every once in a while already, especially on the more visible projects and on more, I guess, more visible sidelines. You know, I've heard it mentioned in planning commission meetings before. So it seems like this is just, you know, that's an appropriate topic anyway. And with David, with Mr. Knight's comments, seems like it's just going to get a little more crowded on the ground.
Yeah, the proliferation of these could be a big problem for neighbors, so.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement on adding Active House?
Yeah, that's just adding it to the list of other resources like Passive House and you know, other programs, LEED, et cetera.
And then I think there was a part two to that.
I think Laura has her hand up.
Yeah, I do. I'm curious. What is Active House? I haven't heard of that. I'm familiar with Passive House, but I'm not quite sure what Active House is, especially when it's capitalized and in parentheses like that.
It's like Passive House, it's a little different. I sent Anya's a link, so you can go on and look at it. It's very similar to Passive House. It's just, it has a little bit different approach that in some cases makes it a little more flexible for certain things, and, but it's, it's just a different different way to get there, I guess is a good way of putting it.
Okay, Anya, is there any way that I can get a copy of that link so I can check it out?
Sure, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Do we? Yeah, I think Laura brings up a point. You know, before we put Active House in here, could we? Yeah, I think Laura brings up a point, you know, before we put active house in here, could we? I'm a little bit hesitant to just to just put this in, put this reference in here without really.
Understanding what it is.
Understanding more completely like what it is. I mean, I can sit here at home and and do like five minutes of research. Report back in five minutes.
I I looked at it and it's it is very similar to passive house. It's it's a little bit different when it gets into. I think it allows for more fenestration on the exterior of the building and offsetting. Energy consumption and other ways to get basically the same result. That's the essential difference, but. I agree that if people want to go and look at it and before it gets added to the listing, it's a good idea.
Yeah, sorry. I was just curious if you are, are you familiar with it enough to know if it? Can really like, what am I trying to say? Measure the energy use of the house, the way that passive house does, like. Actually, when it's built and in operation.
Yeah, it's similar to that. Prescriptive way of looking at the the whole envelope.
And specifically referring to like P H P P, the energy modeling calculations that they use?
That I don't know. You'd have to check it out.
Okay, okay, we'll do. Thank you very much.
So at least for me, I don't know that I I heard a definitive. Answer on that one. On how we would want to proceed.
It sounds like we need more information to be clear.
Yeah, I'm thinking, having listened to this discussion, I'm thinking about maybe backing off my sort of militant position a little bit. Because it doesn't really affect any of the actions. I mean, the the sort of actions or requirements are the actions of the requirements, and maybe it's best that we just. Maybe it's okay that we just put it in as a resource and be sort of ambivalent about how people get to the end goal. What do you think, John and Scott, Carrie? Like, I don't, you know. If we're asking for ninety five percent of X, I'm not sure that. You know, I care that they get to ninety five percent of X, but I'm not sure I necessarily care about how they get there.
Yeah, you've got already got passive house leads, building green, all of those. I mean, those are all very similar. Objectives, but they're all different. And I don't think we're saying that we're proposing everybody do that. It's just another list of. Or just add it to the list of other resources.
Yeah, it's this is an outreach action, so I don't see really an issue necessarily with providing information about it to people.
So I'm wondering just if it would be then more appropriate under. Right now it says add it to one point one point one. It might be more appropriate under one point two point two. In the list of. To add it into this list, the promote participation in green building programs.
Yeah, it's listed, maybe listed. Now I'm going to, now I'm going to change my mind again. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with promoting something that I don't particularly understand. That has just come up at this meeting as opposed to just sort of listing it as a resource. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I feel comfortable sending people down or, you know, suggesting a road as opposed to just saying, here's something you might look at. Does that make sense? Am I, am I being pedantic about this, John?
Well, I don't know. Have you looked at passive house and lead and build it green in detail?
I would say I looked at lead ten years ago when I built my house and passive house has been around for a while and I'm somewhat familiar with that.
What if you listed it under the metric there such as?
Where are you looking, John?
Right below the cursor down at the bottom.
So I think what he's saying is is listed list information on active houses on the city's website.
Yeah, it's a pretty new program, although I do know a lot of architects that are saying that they prefer some of the flexibility in it as opposed to some of the other ones. That's. That's just what I've heard.
So you're suggesting to put it under metric? As as an option there?
Well, no, just suggest it as a resource that that people can look at. We're not necessarily promoting it.
Are you still having trouble with that, Jeff, or?
I'm having trouble with it, Carrie, but it seems like John and I are sort of on opposite ends, so why don't you and Scott decide? Well, I'll pledge to, I'll pledge to go along with whatever you say, and I'm sure John would too.
Well, I I think it's important to list it as an option, so people are aware of it, so. Where's the appropriate place for that? Evan, are you saying the metric is?
Right now, the suggested action is is including it under one point one point one. But we don't have any examples of. Other outreach materials, so I didn't want this to be the one outlier or the the one example. So maybe we update one point one point one. To list. The examples of electrification, energy efficiency and electrification resources to include those. But maybe we don't promote it like we are under one point two point two. I don't know if that gets confusing then. Why? Why do we list it under one but not the other?
What do you think, Scott? You and I are.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm a little confused by that. I'd have to probably stare at it. It sounds like it's.
How about, how about we sort of do what Evan says, Evan, and we just leave all the programs out of one point? One point two point two, and we move them to be sort of reference indicators in one point. One point one, so maybe we take the names of the programs out of, yeah, take the names of the programs out of one point two point two, like Lee and a best spouse. And move all that stuff and add to it and put it in the one point one point one.
Yeah, so this this basically becomes promote participation in green building programs period, and then the examples get bumped up to post links.
Yeah.
Up here, including all of these things.
Right, so you're not promoting it, you're just making it available.
Yeah, suggestive.
Sounds reasonable.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Good team effort.
Okay, so. Next one is add the water district to the list of partners. That one's fairly straightforward. I don't even know that I need to. Show it, but we have a. A list of partners somewhere in here, and it would just be adding them.
Yep, it's definitely important in in this area to do that, so it sounds good.
Roles of partners. Yeah, so just be adding them to the list of partners. And then we would.
That's an easy, easy ask.
Yes. Maintain COD on the list of partners, so they're already on that list, and then amend action three point one point nine to include at the associated infrastructure. So three point one point nine. It speaks to wastewater treatment, specifically the. Facilities. Resilience. Again, it would just be adding in the associated infrastructure like the the sewers.
That sounds good.
All right, and then we get into the council actions. So again, this is just adding a note in the background section or. Believe it's. Basically, just a statement saying that the climate committee will continue to be tasked with oversight of the coastal engineering study. It's not part of a a action or policy or goal. It's just a just a description in a body of text.
I'd like to suggest some clarification on this one if I could.
Sure.
So the question on the left, I'm okay with the suggested action, but not the question. Which I think should be referring to three point one dot eight. And that is to assess risks, have the the engineer assess risks. And determine adaptation measures. Adaptation measures, L C L C P policy actions and what we have here or options, excuse me, what we have here, we talk about basic operation objectives of. Maintenance and. Infrastructure. So I just think. We should be referring to three point one dot eight. And that's both for what we're signing up for is if we continue this committee, but it's also for people to understand what. What's going to happen. So to me, it reads like a basic operations question. Rather than three point one dot eight, which you can see those three items there. You know, assess the at the risk, determine. Adaptation measure in L C P policy options. That's important to me to make sure we understand what we're doing. It's very different than what's listed on that question. I don't know how that got put in there. I mean, this just might have been shorthand, but it's just for me, it's just completely incorrect what the question. Unless someone's changed what we're hiring the coastal engineer for. I don't think it's from for understanding how to do maintenance.
Anya, so able to to speak to that, that was your. Your question.
Sorry, can you put the question up again?
Question number one.
Well, I mean, some of it will be maintenance, but some of it will be improvement, so.
I don't completely disagree with that. We've we've never talked, it's not in the three point one dot eight, anything about. A maintenance or improvement project plan. Those are just, I don't know where that came in, but that's completely inconsistent with three dot one point eight in my mind. It sounds like a short term. Things that we we do already almost. I I think the objective, which is an important one in my mind, is to think about the climate change, the longer term climate change implications. And to hire a coastal engineer to assess those risks from a long term perspective, not annual maintenance. And to think about L C P policy options. That's a big lift. And I think we've kind of skimmed over this last time, too. That's why I'm bringing it up yet again. I mean, if we change it, I guess that can be a decision of the committee, but I I was not aware of us changing. To being a maintenance objective versus a climate change objective. This is completely inconsistent.
Okay, so let me, let me repeat what I'm hearing from you, Scott, back back to you to make sure I under, to make sure I understand it. Your your contention is that action three point one point eight in the report is fine.
Right.
Just that this question is not, doesn't really reflect, like, it doesn't really give an accurate picture of what three point one point eight really is.
No, I think it's completely misleading. It's talking about hiring an engineer for something totally different than than what our climate plan has established. So I don't know how it got switched.
Okay, 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 okay. So so again, the report is okay. It's just this question. So the question could have been phrased a little bit more elegantly or appropriately given what's in the report. But you don't have a problem with the sort of. The direction Anya was trying to ask for, which was who's going to oversee the coastal engineering report? Is that right?
Yeah, I I think that's generally right. I just think it's such a big disconnect, and I brought it up last time, and yet it's still here. That I just don't want us to keep, I it's got brought up in some earlier in this same session tonight. We keep talking about this sort of bluff assessments, like bluff. It's not just about maintenance and understanding the hazards to the bluff. We're trying to get to the climate plan, which is a much bigger lift. Understanding longer term options and including the L C P policy update, so. Just don't want that to be overlooked. It's it's fundamental to what I think you're asking this team to do going forward. And I if it's changed, it's changed, but I I'm just trying to figure out. So one of us is just me asking for clarification. Are we worrying? Are we trying to address maintenance? Are we trying to address the climate plan? And I just think we ought to put it in here, so anyone reading this or being asked this question understands what we're going to do next about the bluff.
Well, I think, so my impression is that if I listen to your question and then read action three point one point eight. Three point one point eight speaks to exactly what you are speaking to, right?
Exactly, I'm very much.
There's not a disconnect. We're not in danger of losing you yet. There's not a disconnect between.
No, I just, I just want that. It's just a, I want us to be on the same page. So I and I'm part of it's a question. Did something change? I'm not aware, or if not, then let's just. Address our plan, not this alternative maintenance goal. I don't like, I don't like to read that, and I I'm hearing that elsewhere in discussion. And I I just, I'm not happy with that. If that's the objective, yeah, you probably would lose me. If we're going to hire a coastal engineer to look at and address the climate change plan that we all agreed to, then yes, I'm I'm on board.
I think we're on, but I think we all agree with you.
So it could just be a minor clarification for this team, and I don't think it requires to change anything in the plan. So that's kind of the nuance here. I'm okay with the suggested action and I'm okay with the plan, it's not the way it's framed here. So in that sense, this is kind of a minor point, but I was just hoping we as a committee could. Acknowledge that that's what we're doing and maybe just clarify, it would help me to say three point one dot eight in there. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Anya, I have a suggestion for this one as well. Or sorry, Evan, I have a suggestion for this one as well. I think that if, you know, it says revise the adaptation plan to. You know, to sort of include the coastal engineering study, I think also. I think that somewhere in this report, you know, I think that the continuation of this committee, which we've all sort of agreed to. You know, however, for however long the engineering study takes, I think if stuff comes up in other areas, we should have, we should sort of have the wherewithal to address them. I think if stuff comes up in other areas, we should have, we should sort of have the wherewithal to address them as well. I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate any, I don't know of anything that's gonna come up, but if something comes up. Um, I think we should have it in our charter to sort of address it. Does that make sense?
So where would you put that then?
I don't know.
Okay.
But do you mind giving an example? I, I'm just not sure I follow what you're saying, just even hypothetically.
Yeah, I'm gonna give a terrible hypothetical example. Um, so we'll all know that this is not true. Let's say that we discovered that the greenhouse gas modeling is incorrect and we need to revise our report. I think we should have the sort of authority to revise the report without having to go back to the council and spend months and months and months doing that. Without having to get that authority. Does that make sense? So if we discover that a piece of data is missing or that a piece of data is incorrect. We should have the authority to make sort of minor changes between version 1.0 and version 1.1. So we've always talked about version 1.1 being sort of 1.0 plus the, plus the coastal engineering report. Right? So that's what we've talked about in the past. And I think if other little minor items come up, we should be able to revise, you know, make revisions to other sections of the report. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You know, it may be, it may be that, oh, I see Bob, definitely don't wanna hear from Bob.
Wow. Oh, that's not true.
You know, it may be, I'm, I'm looking around, I'm looking around for another one, like, uh. I don't know.
Let's see what Bob thinks.
Let's see what Bob has to say. Okay, Bob.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go back a, a couple of minutes about the, um, the word maintenance. I, I'm the one who mistakenly added the word maintenance to that. I, I think the big picture here for this, uh, question number one was the role of the Climate Committee going forward. And it sounds like the Climate Committee will need to oversee that particular project and possibly other projects. So I think the, the big picture, we're all on the same page. In terms of what the coastal engineering study, whatever you wanna call it. Will encapsulate, yes, it will encapsulate what is in the Climate Action Plan. I'm sorry?
Adaptation Plan.
Oh, you're right, the Climate Adaptation Plan. This, this, uh, the study will focus on. Uh, the infrastructure or the improvements that need to be done to, to adapt to the, to the sea level rise, et cetera. And stronger winds and storms and things like that.
Yeah, I think we see this.
Consistent with the plan though. That's, you're saying two things. You're saying one, this can be consistent with the plan, and then you say it's going to be something else.
What's in the plan will be given to the consultant as their scope of work, as their guiding, guiding scope of work.
Okay, there's just some important subtleties in there that I wrote that, some of that, so I'm just sort of passionate about seeing. An engineer be hired that can do more than geology. They need to understand.
Right.
LCP context and to give us some guidance to protect the city from liability and how we proceed. Um, with that bluff, and it's not purely about maintaining what we have, and it's, there's other things that are required, very technical and. Delicate things that I think we need to figure out over the coming years. It's a long-term issue that I think. Uh, we need help from a engineer, coastal engineer that understands the LCP context, so I'm gonna keep saying that. I just don't, I just don't want us to water that down. I think it's well-written in our plan. I'm hoping we can stick with that.
Right, we, we are going to, and then, uh, again, the buck stops with me on the word maintenance. I didn't realize it would be subject to such scrutiny, but that's not the intent of this plan.
Okay, that, that's good. That's helpful. I was just trying to, I appreciate that clarification because I, I always started getting the sense that we were shifting the. Objective of that coastal engineer, and I thought that would be a big mistake, because I think it's really important to get someone that understands. Climate change and, and the LCP context. Thank you.
Yeah, it's my understanding, Bob, that we already know how to do the maintenance. I mean, sort of to Scott's point, I mean, the shoreline management plans, I know that there's main, main and stuff in there. We may be. We may not do it, and we may be behind, but I think that we know what we're supposed to be doing.
Mostly, yes, that is true.
You know.
Yeah, we'll probably get an added benefit of that coastal engineer to help further our longer-term thinking about that, which is great. That's not the primary objective. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Do you remember where we were, Evan?
Yeah. So with. Number two. To the adaptation plan recommends establishing a sustainability commission to oversee the plan's implementation. Does the council support establishment of the sustainability commission? So in summary, again, the council was hesitant to appoint a new sustainability commission. At this time, due to the commissioner volunteer availability, staffing resources and costs. Um, so. We are looking to add the above council feedback in the outreach section and revise the adaptation plan to reflect. That a existing board or commission should take responsibility to oversee the plan's implementation. As opposed to the establishment of a new sustainability commission. And retain the recommendation of a grant writer slash climate coordinator for consideration, but also assess staffing capacity to perform this work. Once public work staffing returns to pre-pandemic levels. Um, I don't know if that requires any further discussion or not.
Not on my part. I think the concern here is, um, after, uh, the design review. We're probably going to have a design review commission that's going to be coming back. And so the planning commission would then have more, um, time to focus on these issues. Is there more in the planning commission? Um, so I think that's kind of where we're headed. Um, and, uh, I think we're kind of waiting to see how some of this unfolds. Right, Jeff?
Right. I think there is pretty broad spore for a design review board, bringing the design review board back. Um, I, 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 I did want to bring it back now. But I think the other four members of the council wanted to sort of wait until the design traditions project is done. And then sort of go, go from that point, so start the design review board with a new set of, um. Uh, with, with the new set of, with the new set of guidelines.
Exactly. And then, you know, if you add another commission to design review, planning, forest and beach, community. Community, uh, events and historical review board. Um, it gets a bit onerous to, on, not only the staff, but finding people to. Um, fill those positions, so. Um, so I'm, I'm, at this point, I'm comfortable with that. That trend that we're maybe going to.
Okay, moving on to the next one. Just discussing funding sources. Um, so the council did not identify. Um, specific or additional funding sources, so they were supportive of finding the, the funding when. Um, when necessary, so it's just adding that feedback into the outreach section. Jeff or Carrie, did, did I miss anything there?
Not from my, um, viewpoint.
Um, and then, uh, question four. How do we, uh, ensure continued emphasis on long-term implementation? Uh, plants should serve as a roadmap and strategy should not. Excuse me. Sorry, I don't know why I just stopped reading for a second. Um, council stated that the. Council stated that the plan should serve as the roadmap and strategy should be pursued and revisited with the possibility of periodic updates to council. And the city administrator suggested that once the plans are adopted, they can be removed from council strategic priorities. Um, and that another initiative, um, could be, uh, repopulated to that list. So again, um, it's just adding that to the, um, outreach section. Um, none of the actions need to be added. And then regarding the miscellaneous comments, there's a comment about, uh, community workshops, so, um. One of the suggested actions is revising Action 1.2.3 to include community workshops. Um, as an effort to enhance public participation. Not sure any comments about that?
Uh, I did have a question on that one, because, uh, I believe that comment from council had to do.
I think that, oh, sorry, so that was specific to.
Sustainability commission, so if we weren't gonna create a sustainability commission, I'm not sure whether the workshop would be necessary, but, um.
Yeah, I would, I would change it a little bit based on sort of my recollection of, of the conversation, which is that more. That, um, we need to just do better outreach. Like, um. Let's see, Action 1.2.3.
I can pull it up here. So that's, uh, 1.2.3 engage the community, develop educational materials.
Yeah, there's nothing in there about like, and I, and you know, I've, I've talked some about the count, the city having a social media presence. But there's nothing in here about communication. I think that workshops are a form of communication. Um, and sometimes they're well-attended and sometimes they're not, and I think we have just, I think we have this sort of job of. Increasing awareness on this subject, which isn't nearly as sexy as the designer review guidelines.
So do you prefer just a more broad statement on communication in general?
I would. What do you guys think? What do you think, Gary?
Yeah, um, I mean, you know, we kind of found out. We, you know, we tried to do some workshops and they weren't very well attended and, um. So I think when we start, when some of these studies come in and we start, they start making suggestions. I think that's gonna get people's attention. Um. So the workshop, we always wanna communicate better, so, um, I'm all up for that, but I'm not sure a workshop is, is the way to.
Yeah, and I think to Carrie's point, Evan, I think that. You know, when we, when we start going down all these roads that we've sort of outlined here. Um, it would be nice if people knew that the climate change committee or the, you know, the city, let's just say the city was. Had a real interest in climate change and all these things are happening, so that when the climate, whatever it is, part of the city announces that. We're gonna have a hearing on bluff retreat or electrification or something, it doesn't seem like those things are coming out of nowhere. Sort of like a, a background marketing effort, maybe more than just a workshop effort. Like, I got, like I send out, um, I announce the climate change meetings at the beginning of almost every council meeting and. And I occasionally mention them in, in the emails that I send out, and so. A lot of people that I know are aware of what we're doing and they're, you know, they may not know the specifics, but having them be aware is like the first part of the. Is, is like the really the hard, the first and most difficult part of the battle. And so I think it's my preference, my sort of inclination would be to have the city do a better job of. Increasing that awareness.
What do you think, Laura?
Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, I've mentioned this in the past. I feel like Carmel just has so much traction with, um, events that involve. Wine and food, um, and people really turn out for those kinds of things. And I don't know, maybe some kind of a, um, an event like that, that announces that the intention to have several meetings around. What's going on with this and how to, because I think this is gonna be a big piece of the puzzle, because creating. Public buy-in and public awareness is really what's gonna push us into, out of this conversation and into action. Um, and so maybe that's a different way to approach this. Just a thought.
Yep, I mean, people like that sort of thing, so, um, that's, that's a good point. So that's partnering with, uh, the business community to, uh, engage the public. Um, uh, so I, I think somehow, uh, folding that in. It's, it's, it is a part of communication.
Yeah, I'm like envisioning something at Sunset Center where, whether it's Carpenter Hall or the main auditorium or whatnot. Just saying, hey, folks, here we are, this is what we're up to and we wanna let you know about it and be, they're like, for instance, um, right now, the Monterey County. Unincorporated area is trying to create their climate action plan, and it, I was watching some recorded video of the, one of the meetings they had not too long ago. And it wasn't going so well. So, uh, the agricultural sector was really upset about it all. And not feeling heard, and so, um, they put the brakes on and they said, okay, instead of having this a one-size-fits-all conversation, let's break it out into sector. So first they did building energy, then they did, um, land use and transportation, then they did water and waste, and the next one that's coming up is agriculture and sequestration. Um, and so I'm feeling like maybe that's a kind of a, something like that. Just saying, hey, folks, this is what we're up to. There's a lot of information here. We need to talk about it, so we're gonna talk about. This, you know, aspect of it on these, this date, and then you just have several different events that, um. I don't know, and then the whole thing of like, you can attract more flies with honey than with vinegar. I'm thinking that, uh, an event that involves food and wine would be something that people would be more excited about coming to. Rather than like, oh, sit down and get lectured at. So I mean, not to say that it's black and white like that, but it just. Picture and put a different spin on it.
Yeah, I think you're adding creativity to it.
Yeah, exactly, and then that, with that comes energy and. I just feel like that might, um.
So does that make sense, Evan?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Okay, and then. Uh, there was support for, um, these actions, so just to add that to the outreach section. Um, and then the implementation of a public solar project, um, so that's add it to. Um, a new policy or a new action under policy 3.1, similar to Action 3.1.2. Uh, so 3.1.2. Sorry, I just went right past it. I think I'm in the wrong document. No. Oh, no. Yes, I am in the wrong document. Yeah, so 3.1.2 increase green infrastructure, modify the CIP project design to consistently evaluate. The potential green infrastructure to be incorporated into CIP projects in the public right-of-way and on public lands. So I guess, um. Actually, now that I'm thinking about this again, this can either be, um, modified to include. Public right-of-way, public lands or city buildings, or it can be a completely separate action that speaks to. Uh, publicly owned buildings. Might be easier just to, to amend the existing action than to add in a new one.
That sounds like a good suggestion. That sounds like a good suggestion.
Not hearing any other comments.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not sure I'm in agreement with that as opposed to not having another um.
You'd rather see it as a separate action.
Yeah, is it, is this the right page?
Yes. Yeah, so right, right now, uh it. The recommended action would be adding in a, an additional action that's similar to action three point one point two. Um so this one is specific to um the right of way in public lands. And then the, the new action would be specific to um city owned property. So I, so the metric would be different as well. Um. And also the uh, the asset and population.
Yeah, I'm. I'm okay with what Gary suggested.
Okay. And I don't hear any other comments, so. And then the last comment was a a public comment, um it's the only uh public comment received. Uh regarding concerns about potential impacts to the built natural environment associated with the increase. Of wireless and cellular infrastructure. So the suggested action is to add the public comment and the council outreach section.
Sounds good to me.
And that. Those are all the comments.
Well, I think we're getting there, aren't we?
Really close.
Yeah, exciting.
I'm sorry. So before this meeting, I was having a conversation, I was talking to Anyas about what to do with these report, what to do with uh. What to do with the sort of next version of the reports before they're given to the council, what the schedule is and. It seems like we're really close um in terms of sort of going through one round of visions and then having the committee sign off and then we're sort of finished. Until the um, until something else comes up, which would need to be one of those other little things or the coastal engineering report. So. Um normally, we would just do this at the next meeting, which is the third Thursday in July, right? Which would be the what?
Twenty first.
Yeah, but I'm having a problem, uh believe it or not, um I'm supposed to be going to Yellowstone next month. And right now, that's um, right now, that's uh pretty much up in the air. And I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to, I'm sorry, John.
I'm, I'm going to Yellowstone, was going to Yellowstone first half and part of third week of July as well.
Yeah, so John's definitely not going to Yellowstone and. And I may not be going to Yellowstone. I'll just share with you, John, when I heard the news. The first thing I did was change my Mammoth Lodge reservation to somewhere else. Um and if you just heard Mammoth, Mammoth has been closed for the rest of the season. Yeah, so I'm glad I got that out of the way, but I'm still not sure uh. I'm not sure that I'm gonna be able to make it. So I was wondering um if the committee would do me the favor. Of having a special meeting to review these changes on July seventh, rather than July twenty first. Um John and Scott and Carrie, would that work for you?
No, I'll be gone then, but that's okay.
Oh, well, are you, are you not going to Yellowstone? You, you found alternate plans? Where are you going? Maybe I could go there in the second half of the month.
I'm gonna be all over Montana for most of the month.
Oh.
So. Won't be near a phone most of the time.
So you'll be gone on the twenty first as well?
Yeah.
Okay, what about you, Scott and Carrie?
I could do July seventh. Um and my question is, can the sta, uh can the staff put it all together by then?
I did talk to Anyas.
We should be able to make those edits by then, yeah.
Okay. Luckily, we don't have a lot of edits. Um so July seventh um works for me. Um the, you know, uh the other option be the twenty eighth, the fourteenth. Um I already have a two thirty meeting on the fourteenth, so. Um but the July seventh could work.
I think the thing about the twenty eighth is that's really close to the August second council meeting, so I think that that's too far, that's too uh. Too late.
Are we planning on um uh presenting this for final to the council in August?
That was the idea.
Okay, I'm just confirming. All right, then, yeah, uh we would have to do it um the seventh.
Does that work for you, Scott?
Yeah, the seventh would work for me as well.
Yeah, it should be a pretty short meeting. And John, I know uh if you, you know, if. If Anyas sends out the report a couple of days ahead of time, if you have the chance. You can always um send your comments to Anyas.
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll, we'll set a special meeting up for July seventh.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your hard work.
Oh, Laura's got her hand up.
I'm curious, would that be at the same time, three thirty? On the seven?
Thirty works for, alright.
I guess I assume, yes, three thirty.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks for clarifying, Laura.
You got it. We're in this together.
All right. Is that it?
Okay.
Is that, that was the only agenda item, so. We're getting close. I love it. Way to go, folks. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Bye.